Six.
Don't forget to ring the phones. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting in the City Council for February 24, 2025. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Hughes.
Here.
Moonport.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
Issa.
Here.
Conchall.
Here.
And Hart.
Here.
And Flann.
Here.
The first item is citizen input. Further rules is a three-minute per person time limit to address the council on any topic that person is choosing. Total time for all citizens is 30 minutes. Any fine time extension would be a discretion of the City Council. I don't think we'll need that. The first person is Matt Sanders of Seven Nantwich Circle.
Good evening, Councilwoman, gentleman, and Mr. Mayor. Shout out to Richard Greer and Chief Sims. They heard my cries for help last month and immediately came out to accept our three-story deck. They did confirm what was already discovered by Bobby, which is it was built below the minimum standards, and gave us some new information on like the erosion causing our AC to go below grade, so we found some new stuff. So, but just wanted to say thank you to them. But what I'm really here for is to now change gears and talk about the Oz Bike Park. I feel that a lot of questions the last few weeks must become public, and I want to address some of those questions, comments, and concerns with y'all. One is short elevation bike parks are quickly becoming a thing in the United States. As someone who just drove 14 hours and get to one a few weeks ago, I can say that they provide a really awesome ride that we do not have anywhere in Northwest Arkansas. Using Hilltop, which is back in Anker, Alaska, they are a short elevation bike park as well at only 294 feet, so very similar to what's being offered here. They've sustained year-over-year growth for the last three years, and we're going into our fourth season, and they immediately won over our residents because with the lift assist, it decongested the city streets, and so all of the bike riders who were shuttling up the mountain to get to the top of it were pulled off and they were using the lift. So it was a great thing. For us here specifically, it'll be the decongestion on Topham, and then the trailhead at the top of that where Cunningham and Oldham meet, it just can't hold very many people anyway, so now you'll have a risk of all those riders trying to get across the street and creating a dangerous situation. So a lift assist is crucial. Two is the economic growth. What we, once I told my friends about it, they've all said the same thing, can't wait to come. And so being in the mountain bike capital of the world, we now have an opportunity to have an economic impact for Bell Vista. People are gonna come here, spend their money to ride the trails, and get food, get beverages, all that good stuff. So economic growth. Three, the learning capabilities with this type of riding, we cannot get through our normal 105 miles at Bell Vista. And so quantifiably speaking, one day on this mountain bike park is equivalent to riding 10 days of our regular trail. So we're gonna be able to increase our learning capabilities for all of our riders. And then finally, I want to leave you with, we have city ordinances, and so any project that goes through, we'd like you to follow those city ordinances. Specifically, with this project, we would like paved parking lot and sidewalks. When we get done riding our bikes for the day, we want to be able to ride our bike safely across the street to Las Vegas, grab some margaritas and California burritos, and not have to die. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Costa of Six Kirkwood Drive.
You know how to tell me when we start or I do not. We get started. Oh, excuse me. Good evening, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Mayor, Sir, and Attorney Kelly and staff, everyone. You may recognize me for my involvement with the Bell Vista BCA and PC meetings. However, I'm here as a citizen, Sarah Jane Costa, today. I was initially inspired by Matty's January address to you as a Bell Vista citizen, and then Mr. Mayor John Flynn, your citizen input about the recent land and drive fiasco was very inspiring. But then on Valentine's Day, Friday night, I responded to a public input survey from Bell Vista's newly elected Travis Hart, and it was a fascinating exchange. I wanted to call out once more to Travis. Your vote always matters. It always does. It always has. I feel very strongly about this. You'll have to excuse me if I get emotional. Mr. Hart, sir, why don't you focus more on your heroic efforts for the rapid fire department? It is your background after all. What are you stirring in Bell Vista? So far, my opinion, your leadership is a skunk. It stinks. We all see you and the negative effort you are bringing to the table. Please relax and think before you speak. My citizen opinion only. I'd like to thank you all personally for your great dedication to our city. You are here all for a reason. It's God's plan. Thank you for our brave public agents, firefighters, police, street planning, building, trails, admin, library departments, commissioners, and Mayor, Dr. Mr. John Flynn. We're very blessed to have such a strong and dedicated team in our city. I share your vision to keep Bell Vista beautiful, natural, and progressive. I'm an Arkansas native, and I've lived in Bell Vista since 2015. About short-term rentals, STRs, there is and always has been a cap of 600 permits. We are actively approaching 150 permits left. Our city's growth is big, exciting, and noteworthy, but we all agree and love our 600 permit cap. I propose 700, not 800 as initially thought, to consider our housing prices of today, but we need to also consider our lack of lodging. Professionally rated establishments are lacking in Bell Vista, and you know that's okay. 700 represents an enthusiastic vision for our short-term rental community. If you'd like to keep and enforce our current 600 cap, I know staff will be hard on applicants after that cap is reached. It'll be a situation that'll be difficult. I can hardly imagine it. A weightless, that will be a nightmare, but it's manageable. I'm optimistic for that. If you're on board, I am too. Thanks for your consideration to raise the Bell Vista short-term rental cap to a strict 700. About the Oz Bike Trail, I'm very concerned about safety. Ride at your own risk, there will be more bike-related injuries. If Bell Vista could stay up efforts with the Oz trails, y'all and we could be leaders in safety and rider awareness together. Neither does my chief sense as a Bell Vista citizen. Thank you humbly and respectfully for all your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The next speaker is Lori Trotline of Seven Knox Lane.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the library. On December 23rd, there was a Facebook post regarding the garden and a picture posted where it had been completely mowed down. And this is Facebook, so I called the library to find out what was going on. I spoke to Suzanne Adams. I believe she's the library manager. She said that they could cut down two burning bushes because of scale, which is a disease that is treatable, and that was all that was being done. It was gonna be a little bit more maintenance in that front bed, but nothing was gonna be done on the side bed. I get over there a week later, everything had been decimated in the front bed, and the side bed had also been cut back to within an inch of its life. You don't do that in December. You're going to kill the plants. They're just not gonna survive the winter. After a little bit of research, we found out that the volunteers had decided to no longer maintain the gardens. I've heard different versions of why, but that they offered to continue to maintain until another source of maintenance was provided, and they were told, no, you're out of here. One week, you're gone. All right, well, that's the gardens. And then on January 28th, Encore Bookstore has given a notice to vacate. Apparently, there had been some sort of negotiations versus a lease versus a MOU. I don't, again, know the background of all of this because I'm reading about it on Facebook. I'm not hearing about it from the City Council. I'm not seeing articles in the newspaper. I'm reading about this on Facebook. You can't take half of what you see on Facebook for truth, so I don't know what's going on. I do know that they donated something like $1,200 a week. They provided the bulk of the money for the addition, and now all of that money is gone. And then I read in the newspaper, finally, on the 20th, that Marian Farner is resigning from the board, the library board, which he'd been part of since 2014. There were also a number of other members that were resigning, that had been involved in the board. All of this is going on behind closed doors. I don't think the City Council knows half of what's happened. I know the public doesn't know. I don't know how much of this has to do with the hybrid ownership management of who owns the library, who owns the grounds, who pays the salaries. But this is crazy. Who's gonna make up the difference of what Encore have been providing? Is that now gonna come out of taxes? Or are we gonna have to come up with a different volunteer? And who would want to volunteer if everything is up in the air all the time? I don't know whether it's management, or leadership, or what is happening, but this needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Lloyd of 102 Fairway Drive.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here because the mayor has proposed reappointing me to the Planning Commission, and I do know most of you, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things. My master's degree is in regional planning. I've been a Realtor since 1973, also a real estate appraiser for 20 years. I've done extensive development work in three different states, and over the last year, I've taken some courses, and now as of last week, a certified Arkansas planning official. I take my position in the Planning Commission very seriously, and I think it's a really important position to help guide the city and applicants that come before us. There have been some suggestions that people get special consideration, and that is absolutely not true. It's extremely important for all Planning Commission people to take into account not who the applicant is, but what the application is, and how does it comply with our rules and regulations. It's extremely important to me that we follow our rules and regulations and uphold them for the benefit of the city. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We now have a time for council response. Before people get responding, I'd like to address the library issue. I'd like to read the official announcement from Bell Vista, which I don't think a lot of people have seen. Some people have some evidence. The City Bell, Bell Vista greatly appreciates the support and funding provided to our public library by the Bell Vista Friends of the Library over the past years, and know the organization's bookstore inside the library will be missed among the community. The Friends Encore Bookstore operated within the Bell Vista Public Library under a no-cost lease agreement in stated January 2024. Though they had occupied that space for many years prior, the lease was put in place due to library-related laws that recently had been passed. The lease was set to renew automatically with no changes for 2025. Mayor John Flynn received an email on December 29, 2024, stating the Friends would be terminating their lease effective December 31, 2024. The Friends were interested in remaining in the space under a memorandum of understanding only, not a lease. Mayor Flynn met with the Friends in January 2025, discussed their issues with the lease, and agreed to make all the requested changes. The Friends Board rejected the amended lease and then presented the city with a draft MOU, which included demands that the city was unable to accommodate, including a larger space for the bookstore operation and dedicated office space. Therefore, the city accepted the termination of the leases the Friends requested and followed the legal process to notify the Friends they would need to vacate the space by the close of business Thursday, February 6, as the lease expired December 31, 2024. The library will use the space to expand patron services, shelving, and collections to accommodate our growing number of patrons and programs. So that's the official statement. I was gonna say a lot more, but I think I'll refrain from doing that. It's been very frustrating for me. It was a very frustrating relationship with the Friends, particularly recently, and there's a lot of things that were not going as it should, so I'll leave it at that. Council reply, any of these topics, Wendy?
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Sanders, I'm so glad for Richard Greer and Chief Sims were able to come and help give you some quick help. They're fantastic. I'm so glad that they're part of our team. And also, what you took with the Oz Bike Park, sounds great. I love economic growth and impact for our city. Our community needs more tax base than is commercial. Love that. And I think that you're right, like, we have rules in place about sidewalks and paved parking lots, and so I'm very excited about the possibility, even though I'm not a biker myself. I'm very clumsy. That's okay. Maybe I'll learn. Maybe I'll figure something out. Ms. Costa, thank you for coming as a citizen here, and I will touch on the cap suggestion. I think it's a great idea. I think we definitely discussed as a council about raising that cap, especially when originally, I was on the council at the time, it was originally proposed to keep it about 4% of the homes, and because we are having expensive growth in homes, redressing the cap might be something we need to consider to make sure that we do have lodging when the growth we have, the Oz Bike Park, and that sort of thing. So I'm willing to have those conversations in the future. Lori, you're right, the council, we didn't know what was happening with the library situation, and partly because we're legislative, not executive, so it's out of purview. Personally, we'd love a heads up. Would have been great, just because being able to field calls with as much information as possible is very beneficial, but I actually think that's not, it's out of our wheelhouse on that end. Sometimes I wish it wasn't, but that's just kind of the reality of the situation. And then Linda, there you are. Thank you for speaking tonight. Yeah, your CV is announced. And her. Been a very rich community. I'm excited to see what comes next.
Mr. Mayor. Craig.
Hi, ma'am. I'm gonna get kind of off the weeds a little bit. I don't know if anybody watched the work session. I was not the best move, and I really feel like I called any applicant that applied for planning, the transportation thing. I think I accidentally, unwittingly, basically called everybody out, and I don't know if anybody took it that way. I took it that way. A lot of time with myself to think about how I deliver my thoughts. So, and I'm a real process guy, so I do trust the planning department. I do trust everybody that's, you know, a professional employee. I can't do their job. So when they make a recommendation, you know, that is our job, to get into it and really read and research and all those things. So if anybody was offended by anything I said, any of the applicants, I'm really sorry. That was not my intention. That is never my intention. And I've got some more things to say. I'll save it for later. But I do want to ask, or say, you know, the Oz Trail, the information that I have on that so far, you know, everything that I've done, basically from when I was a planner in Fayetteville and planner here, you know, everything is safety, and that's the biggest concern I have. I am, I'm not anti-bike, you know, I think the trail's gonna do great things, but I'm very concerned about the safety aspect of this whole thing. You know, we have an obligation to do this correctly, and not just five years from now correctly, 30 years from now correctly. I mean, it is a big, big endeavor. I'm super excited to get into it. I mean, I think it's gonna be interesting, to say the least. But with that, I would concede. Thank you.
Travis?
Yeah. Hey, Matt, thanks for your unique perspective on the bike park. I hadn't heard that yet, so it's good to have some ammunition to speak positively about that when constituents come to me and complain about it. Also, I think it's worth mentioning that I did a little bit of research into your house situation, and it's just, to me, it's noteworthy to say on record that that happened prior to the fire department taking over inspection, so hopefully that will be a positive impact for situations like you to not happen again. And then Sarah, thanks for coming tonight and speaking. I really enjoyed your perspective on increasing the cap for short-term rentals. I like that idea. I know a lot of people are not been like that. I did. It's kind of split half and half, and I'm sorry for offending you with my survey. I was just doing my best to reach as many constituents as possible, so I didn't really mean to offend you, and I'm sorry that you took it in a negative manner, so. And then Lori, I'll piggyback off of what Wendy said. City Council, it's out of our, you know, we don't. So what I learned about the bookstore thing, the City Council, we do approve leases, but we don't have anything to do with the termination of leases. So I learned that as a newly-elected City Council member, I thought we should have been told right away of that more. And then Linda, thanks for your involvement and your hard work and everything you do for those.
Anybody else? Al Larry?
Just a couple of comments. The paving of the parking lots and driveways for the bike trail thing that Mr. Sanders brought up, that's an expense item, and right now, we're not flush on cash for capital projects. In fact, if you look at the next five years, we will have a challenge in funding those, so just as a reference. I understand what you're saying. It's nice to have a debate.
It's a private park, sir.
What's that?
It's a private, front-of-the-part.
Oh, the parking lots?
The whole thing, sir.
So, okay. So you're aware of that? Okay. The issue about the library, I guess, one observation that I've made in all the articles that I've read is that in any contract relationship, there's a grantor and a grantee. The grantor has some priority choices in terms of how they deal with the given situation. In other words, the form of the contract, perhaps some key language in the contract, and other provisions like that. So the grantor, which would be the city in this case, does have some prerogatives in terms of how they might want to deal with a relationship of a subordinate issue, such as a rental. So I know there was a lot to do about whether the tenant wanted a memo of understanding in the city prevailed with a lease agreement, and so relative to that, the city is the grantor, the city does have some prerogatives in that area. And really, the bottom line probably is, according to law, provisions are the same or similar, but the city's choice was a lease agreement, so. I'd like to say that if our library has been decimated with the shrubs, we should probably cancel that contract of whoever did that because they obviously are not knowledgeable about taking care of foliage of any kind, whether it's plants, shrubs, or trees. That's a suggestion for Linda Lloyd. I appreciate her service and recognize her skills and abilities and contributions to the planning commission. I want to thank her for that.
Wendy?
Sorry, this is for, I think, clarification on Larry's comments about the parking lots and the sidewalks, and Taylor might help if I'm wrong. The entity would have, the Walton, or Blue Crane would have to be responsible or pay for those, correct? It's not a city expense.
That's correct. We complied and offered, they were required in our code.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. We're all set. The next item is action on amendments, approval of amendments to the January 27, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. It's a motion to approve. Sergeant? That's Craig and Larry Wilms. Craig Conchall, Larry Wilms. Roll call, uh.
Councilmembers Hughes. Yes. Moonport.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Issa.
Yes.
Conchall.
Yes.
And Hart.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you for that. Next one is the monthly financial report, and I just wanted, you know, in the prior meeting... And I just wanted, you know, in the prior meeting, we went over November 30, the financials, and December 31 are not ready yet. They're never ready this fast, because it's year-end, and there's a lot of special things you need to do at year-end. So, I want to take the time from the financial report to talk about the credit rating of the city of Bellevista. When we did our bonds in 2020, our 1% bond, it was the first time the city had done a bond. And so, we got our first credit rating, which was double A minus. And this was from S&amp;P Global Ratings, which is Standard and Poor's. And we were pretty happy with that, because that's the same as Rogers and Bentonville and some of the big cities around here. And recently, Standard and Poor's did a review with us, granted their review to make sure things are still going okay. And they contacted us and got a lot of financial information ahead of time, then had a conference phone call with Kim Hall, our Director of Finance, and myself. And we had our financial advisor, which was Stevens, Inc., it was Kevin Fought of Fayetteville, because they were, Stevens was one of the firms that supplied the funds for our bond. So, we were advised that there's no way your credit rating would get better. It probably stayed the same, double A minus. So, we had this conference call, made some arguments about why our credit should be better. And to our surprise, pleasant surprise, when we got our rating, it was double A instead of double A minus. So, our credit rating had improved, had improved. And the reason was, the original bond was from 2045, and the financial experts estimated it would pay off in 2031, based on our flow of our city taxes, city sales tax. And now, they're saying it will pay off in October 2027. So, our city sales tax has been better than people would have expected. And the second reason is because of our, well, the health of Northwest Arkansas in general, but in particular, the fact that we're adding five or six homes a year. It looks pretty certain that our sales tax will continue to increase. In fact, in 2019, right before we took out the bond, our sales tax was $1.9 million, our city sales tax. And in the latest year, 2024, it's over $4 billion. So, it's more than double, and it's increased much more than people expected. So, that's been very encouraging for us, and I just wanted to relay that good news about the credit rating for our financial report. Okay. The next item is, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
Motion to approve.
Second. That's Larry Wills and Craig Hansel. A roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Whoops. That was a big mistake, sir. Hansel?
Yes.
And Harp?
Yes.
It's a new year.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is unfinished business and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bellevista to increase procurement authority without soliciting competitive bids from $35,000 to $42,921 to conform with state law changes providing for indexing set amounts to inflation, amending sections for purposes of conformity therewith, and for other purposes. And this is, of course, the state law because of the amount of inflation. I think it was five years, don't they, every five years?
Now they do. So, state law changed a couple of years ago, and that came to effect January 1 of this year, where the normal, what was previously a $35,000 cap on what we can buy before we have to either get a competitive bidding or have some reason to waive the competitive bidding, was then indexed to inflation. And they're gonna review that every five years. The first indexing to inflation resulted in an amount of $42,921. So, that's why you have that odd number here, that we expect that to be the number for the next five years. And that's what it is.
Yeah. So, this is on second reading. Larry?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and move to the third reading of this ordinance.
Second.
That was Larry Wills and Wendy Hughes. Motion to move to the third final. A roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. It's all ready for a third final time. Amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bellevista to increase procurement authority without soliciting competitive bids from $35,000 to $42,921 to conform with state law changes providing for indexing set amounts to inflation, amending sections for purposes of conformity therewith, and for other purposes. So, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Larry Wills and Anna Isbell. A roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Harp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you for that. The next one is an ordinance amending Section 2-140 Code Enforcement Officers of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bellevista to provide for development compliance officers, defining their authority, and for other purposes. And this is on second reading. Did you want to hear, or Larry?
Motion to waive the rules and proceed with the third reading of this ordinance.
Second.
That was Larry Wills and Shay Newport.
Just call me down.
I wondered if anybody wanted to have a discussion. I don't want to rush ahead.
I do want to have discussions, but we can do it after.
At this point, mayor, the debate will be whether to suspend the rules.
Yes. I don't think we should suspend the rules. I think we should tie to all three readings on this personally.
I guess my thought would be is that I haven't heard any feedback from the residents about this ordinance, pro or con, and it's a matter of operation for us. It does streamline our operation a great deal and allows us to address aspects relative to planning and development codes that are not necessarily the chief focal point of the code enforcement under the police department. So, what it does is it sets up a sharing on code enforcement between the police department and planning and development departments, based upon the alignment in that group. And I don't know if putting it off is going to create any difference in how we address this, unless some of you have reservations about it at this point and are unwilling to commit to approval.
Craig?
Kind of to chime in, I mean, I could appreciate what Councilmember Hughes is saying. There wasn't any further discussion in the work session, and I've not received any emails or anything otherwise. The only question I would have, Taylor, does that put, or I guess, does that put anybody in limbo, like? I mean, if this waits for the third reading, is that going to put a strain on anybody in any way?
Well, I can just tell you that...
Matt, please.
Well, I was just gonna say that it's probably that most are gonna just put off for 30 days some actions that we're ready to take on some cases, but is that fair to say? It's not gonna hurt anything if it works.
That's all I'm getting at, is that if this is slowing down the process of something, I'd be fully supportive of going to the third and final. I mean, just for the sake, not to get somebody, but, you know, just to get this thing. But like I said, there's been no further discussion. I've not received any information from anybody, email, text, or anything else. So, I really have a problem.
Mayor? Justice?
Yeah, I've received several emails and phone calls speaking out against this. And I've done a lot of research on this topic myself, and I feel like if this was best practice, at least one successful city from here to the River Valley would have adopted this. And I've talked to almost every city from here to there, and even some of the counties, and none of them do it this way. I did speak to Little Rock, and after Taylor told us that they were doing it this way. And they do it a lot different, actually, from my understanding. They actually have a code enforcement officer assigned to each division. So, there's a landscape code enforcement, there's a driveway and a parking enforcement. And also, I don't think that Little Rock is a good comparison to Bellevista. So, I personally don't support this still, and a lot of my constituents have reached out to me. I also don't support suspending the rules and moving to the third final.
Okay. Can I respond, Councilmember Hansel?
Sure. Please.
It actually has slowed down a little bit. I mean, on my end, because there have been...
Yeah, okay. It has slowed down a little, but on my end, there was a situation a couple of weeks back, where we had to respond to Assistant Taylor with issuing some citations, because her folks don't have the enforcement capacity to do that yet. So, I mean, it's nothing that's earth-shattering, but it is slowing things down. This ordinance passing, and this would smooth things out, like I think someone, Councilmember Wilms had mentioned, this will smooth things out between departments. This is operational. This has nothing to do with anything else. It's operational between departments. And this is gonna help us in the department to enforce things where they belong and whose wheelhouse they belong, where the professional purview is for each department as far as code enforcement. So, I just, I'm not sure that they hang up this. This does make things go smoother for us, and I will support this, Chief, please.
Well, I guess, I guess that's the thing that I have, is that my perspective lies in, why aren't we talking about this last work session? If there's a lot of problems with it, this shouldn't have been talked about. We shouldn't be here trying to...
Nobody's called me to ask me at all how this would impact.
That's kind of my point, is that that's with the work session, that's what we're supposed to talk about, and then we just kind of blazed right through it, and nothing was said. So, I just came in thinking that everybody was pretty much on board, so... And I'm, you know, I'm all about transparency. If you guys want to go third, I'm fine with that.
Got any questions for me while I'm here?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know, is that if you could explain...
I'm not sure what to explain.
I don't know.
Point of where she, she touched on the motion first, and then do the question debate regarding the actual...
At this point, it depends on your question of whether to suspend the rules.
Yeah. Okay. Why don't we do the roll call vote on that? Hang on, Chief. Go ahead.
Councilmember Hughes?
No.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
No.
Hansel?
Yes.
Harp?
No.
Mayor, it's tied three to three.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote unless it's been the rules. I don't think we should be breaking down this.
So, it remains on second reading, and your debate continues on second reading.
Yeah, but why don't you go ahead? With the quote, I think they have a question for you, explaining how it works, or why.
Go ahead.
Anna, go ahead.
My basic question is just around, why not have the person just report to you, but specialize in the code enforcement piece of it? Does that make it more or less smooth? Because in my mind, it seems more smooth, but...
Do you mean, report to me, but then operate...
But still only forces the codes for building codes, STR codes, because you're specialized.
That's what we've been doing, okay?
And that's not all of this person does. This person does my inspections for me. They do my final inspections for development. They do the follow-ups. They do the large-scale inspections. They do the landscape inspections. This person does everything encompassing development enforcement, from administration to enforcement. It's not just code enforcement. That's why his name is different. He does everything encompassing development compliance from all end, beginning and end.
Then, for my department to supervise that person, my folks would have to learn everything she knows, okay? So, we could supervise them and their job and what they're doing. So, again, we're duplicating efforts. That's where the expertise is, and so that's where the code enforcement should be. I'm not sure what the big hangup is here. I'm just saying, that's where the expertise is. And so, to ask me to learn everything she knows, to supervise this person, to then do the job she wants them to do, I would be calling her and asking, and you see what I'm saying? So, does that answer your question?
Any other questions? So, we're gonna be at the third and final next month, then?
Okay.
Thank you. Good time. Okay. Under new business, we have a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Linda Lloyd to position two of the Bellevista Planning Commission for a term expiring March 1, 2029.
Motion to approve.
Second. That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Hansel. A roll call vote.
Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Harp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. And the next one is resolution approving the mayor's appointment, Jack Wagner, to position three of the Bellevista Planning Commission for a term expiring March 1, 2029. If he's here, which I think he is, Jack, would you like to stand up? I was gonna introduce everybody, but you all already knew Linda Lloyds, so you should just freeze right by that. Anyway, I think most of you have spoken to Jack. I know I have, and Taylor has, and he don't mean to spoke with most of the council votes, so anyway, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Craig and Anna. A roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
I'm voting no.
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Harp? I'm gonna add this, yeah.
Oh, Harp. I'm sorry. Harp, yes.
Yes.
So, motion carried five to one. Did you want to say something?
I would, in deference to Mr. Wagner. We spoke on the phone for probably half an hour, maybe almost 45 minutes, and I was very impressed with his skills and his background. And I voted no, not because I don't believe he's capable of that position. I think he's overqualified for it, and we would be better served with him in another position that focuses more on the whole horizon of planning. So, that's why I voted no. It's not that I don't support him, voted no, because I think he's overqualified, and he's going to be disappointed over time with this position.
Okay. I thank you for that.
Just for the reading.
I was gonna say, you should have talked 55 minutes instead of 45, but I guess not. Everybody helped. Next one's a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Jonathan Eli to the Act of Transportation, if I had to report, for a three-year term beginning March 1, 2025. And Jonathan is a one-year incumbent. You know, when we first started this group, we wanted staggered terms, so some people end up with really short terms. And I don't know if he's here tonight. I guess not. So, anyway, they shortened the term to, to get the stagger going, so it's kind of, you're just getting warmed up. So, they've been happy with this work upon the board.
I have, Mr. Mayor, I have an amendment for that resolution. And the amendment is to add the title of position number six as a part of the title. It's missing there, but it's showing the two previous ones we've just adopted. And it makes it easier in the search to have that position number in the title. So, I propose to amend the title by adding position six.
Okay. And the handout, I guess, it says he's position six?
Yes. You know, it's only in the title, which is where the other ones are.
Well, if it's going to be in the title, it also needs to be in the body.
Okay.
But I would suggest that it really doesn't have to be in either, because we're filling two full terms with the two positions. And I don't know that we have ranked this board by position number, but doesn't mean we can't, and it's certainly something you can do. So I would just say that it needs to be, anything that's in the title definitely needs to be in the body.
Okay. And I would add my revision or amendment to include the body of the text that I inserted as well.
I need to bring up, so I'm just, don't amendments have to be in writing?
He's in writing, and I wrote it down, what he just said.
Oh, okay, that's why I...
Him, that's here, it covers that part of the other one.
Very good. Okay, so that's a motion for amendment, is there a second? Oh, sorry. That was Larry Wills and Craig Hansel. Roll call vote on the amendment.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, no. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried five to one.
What, I understand vote.
So that was to have the amendment in place, so now we vote again on whether to pass it, right, Jason?
Yes, sir, it would be in order for someone to move to adopt it unless there's further debate.
Okay.
I'll move to adopt the amended motion.
Travis?
Yeah, I just have some debate on this, or just...
You said you moved to adopt the amended motion.
Yeah.
Then we just amend it.
The amended, you're moving to adopt the resolution?
Resolution, I was hoping, okay.
All right, sure.
Yeah, I think we need a second, then we can talk about it. Somebody want to say?
Second.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Hansel, Travis?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know that there was a lot of applications for all of these positions, and I would just encourage every staff member that's involved in this to try really hard to reach out to all of the applicants, even if you don't want to, you know, take them in for an interview, or even if you do interview them and you decide they're not a good fit, to at least send them an email and thank them for their time, because I had a couple of people reach out to me and say, I applied for this, I'm extremely qualified, I'm surprised that you found somebody more qualified than me, and I've never heard anything back from the city. So I would just encourage staff members, I know it's a lot more work for you, especially with this amount of applications, but they're willing to volunteer their time, and I just feel like we should take time to at least send them an email and thank them for that.
I think that's a good point. I had some, I don't know, you may have been contacted eventually, but I had someone call me and say, hey, I haven't heard you think yet, one way or the other, you know, that was a week and a half ago, COVID. And it does happen, it's a legitimate point. It's, you know, this thing's gotten so popular, and we've gotten such good quality applications of some, a lot of our volunteer positions, and it's really unbelievable. So you could be a really high-quality person and not get it, is what it must do.
I would also like to just say that I think I get more calls and emails than anyone, because I'm first on the list when you go to the website, so that could be why I can't always go to the other councils.
Okay.
Motion?
Oh, yeah, we had a motion to second pass this, didn't we? So we need a roll call vote, one, on the motion to pass the amended resolution.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. And next one's a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Nathan Boone to the Active Transportation Advisory Board for a three-year term beginning March 1, 2025.
Motion to approve.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wills, I forgot, neglected to ask if Nathan Boone was here. Okay.
Just too late to amend that.
Okay, we're ready for, thank you for coming, appreciate it. We're ready for a roll call vote.
Okay, so a bit of motion to approve?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was Mr. Hansel, Mr. Wills, second, yeah.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell, yes. Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero, thank you very much. Next one is approving the mayor's appointment of Isaac Merriman as an ex-official youth member of the Active Transportation Advisory Board. And I believe I was considered, he wants to hand out. Met him a couple times, he's very active in the community, and he's someone who made perhaps like this resume, so... There are motion to approve?
Second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Wendy Hughes. A roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried six to zero. Next one is approving the mayor's appointment of Grace Dean as an ex-official youth member of the Active Transportation Advisory Board. Is Grace here? Thank you, I guess right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moving.
Second.
That was Mr. Wills and Anna Isbell. A roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Laura Williams to the Bellavista Arts Council to fill an expired term ending April 22, 2026, due to the resignation of Gina Porter.
Motion to approve.
Here's Laura Williams.
Okay, cut.
Laura Williams, excuse me.
Please, sir.
Mr. Wills made a motion, is there a second? Yes, sorry, I didn't know if there was a second. Craig Hansel, second. A roll call vote. Yes.
As point of order, do we have discussion before motions to approve?
It'd be great.
Or it can be after, either way.
Okay.
It's a point. Yeah, it can be after the motion is second, but it's not supposed to be in between the votes.
Which one is that? Craig.
Wendy?
Like, your resume was so impressive. Laura, just incredible life, and I'm really excited to have you on our Arts Council.
I agree.
Are we ready? Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with L E L L V R Company in the amount of $56,491.01 pursuant to a source well corporate purchase and agreement for the purchase of 15 sets of fire department bunker gear, and that's the protective firefighter clothing.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wills and Shay Newport, sorry. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group Asylum Springs pursuant to a state procurement contract for the purchase of one Ram 1500 four-by-four pickup truck in amount not to exceed $40,500 for use by the Code Enforcement Division of the Police Department. Any discussion? Larry Wills?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Hansel. Any more discussion? Okay, I will call vote.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution amending the 2025 city budget in the amount of $11,831 to reallocate funding to complete the development code reform project. This was in Taylor's area, and it's a set contract for the whole board code reform project, and they didn't pay quite as much as she thought last year at the end of the year. And she knows they're going to get to that elbow number this year, I think, so they didn't put that little bit of money back in this year. So technically, it's a budget amendment on 2025.
Motion to approve, second.
And that was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wills, a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wills?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution amending rules of order procedure in the Bellavista City Council to authorize virtual attendance by council members at regular meetings, no more than four times per calendar year. Craig Hansel?
Okay, I'm going to get muddy things up a little bit. This is still part of my nutrition tour. I really got in the weeds, I don't know how I did this. And I called him a question, I learned about it in college, I'm really sorry. I've been laid off for six months, first day back to work was today. So it's been a stressful time. And I think the way that I read this initially, I don't really even know how I digested the information, but I got it really wrong, really, really wrong. And I would, and in the, I'll try to talk enough so you guys can consider what I'm going to say here. I would almost like to table this, I would almost just like to just make it to where there's not a limited number, just make it a relative, you can't make it if you're here virtually, you're here. Times have changed, and that's kind of the thing that I'm trying to settle into myself, is that I'm not used to really feeling like everybody's in the game together. And I'll leave it at that. And that's a decade worth of public service, not saying anything more about it. So, coming from that angle, you know, I would almost just like to table this, make it all virtual, if you need to be virtual, be virtual, you know, and then just have two allowed absences due to family illness, or, you know, some catastrophic something. I know, Jason, you're just about to lose mine, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
Too late.
I know. But, but no, I mean, it just, you know, and I got my math wrong. I saw the grims down there, I am an engineer, and, you know, I was going to go out and get a math for Douglas book, I felt really dumb, so, anyway. If you guys, I don't, I would like to hear some discussion about that, if we want to take it back to the work session and kind of just rehash it, I'm open to anything. So, and I don't, I certainly don't want to be the curmudgeonly old man that sits down here and is not part of the club, or not that way, but, you know, it takes teamwork. So I want to be part of that team, so, anyway, I'd be interested to hear others' thoughts.
Travis?
I'm glad to see that you kind of changed your mind on that. I thought it was a little ironic, we were on Zoom arguing about whether Zoom was okay or not.
Oh, my gosh, I got off and wanted to call every single one of y'all, I didn't hear, I had that. I mean, I carry a tablet, like a turtle carries a shell, so, I mean, that's me, so...
I'm personally still okay with four times being maxed out. In the event it had to happen five, I'd be okay with that, too. So I'm open to discussion on that, too. I don't think anybody on this council wants to take advantage of that, I think it's just fair. In the, you know, like I said, in the work session, for those of you that didn't hear it, three retired folks got off the city council, and three working professionals got on the city council. And there's things that came up in my professional life where it will prevent me from physically being here, however, I will be able to attend virtually, and I'll be late in the summer, and that can come up from time to time, and I think my constituents or our constituents are probably okay with that.
So first, congratulations on the job, that's very exciting, I'm so excited for you. And then two, thank you for realizing, with his case that you were in, and being willing to think through and process things. I do agree, I like having some limits, I think that while I do trust, our council members have to abuse this, if it were pretty open, rules in place, I want to make sure that we're thinking forward for future councils in the future. So I am happy with the number four, personally, and I have some limits, I like the rules. But I think that talking about changing the number, we need to, absolutely, but yeah, I like the idea of keeping a nice solid number, personally, but thank you, Craig.
Shay?
Craig, I appreciate your candor tonight, and I just also want to voice support of thinking about this rule occurring in perpetuity, and during my time in municipal league, there were city council members from other jurisdictions who lamented a bit about an unlimited rule, and they felt like some of their council persons maybe took advantage of that. So from that perspective, I'm also okay with a four limit, thank you for asking.
Larry?
I guess I'm probably the senior council here in many different ways. I grew up with cell phones or bag phones, and you'd carry it with you. I've been to Alaska and managing the utility with a cellphone in a bag, and it worked wonderfully. It was the, not the digital variety, but the analog variety, and they would call just about anywhere, and they could get ahold of me, so my technology goes back to almost the paper version, and it does. But the cell phones were the start of the technology in a lot of areas that we are accustomed to today. I did submit an amendment wanting to change the four to a two. I'd be receptive to tabling this for another meeting, and let us decide what type of language we'd like to put in here collectively, whether it's unlimited, or whether we want to leave it at four. So I would suggest that we table this for this meeting, it's not an urgent thing, I don't think. And one of the things I do understand, however, is that we will have to implement some special considerations to make this happen, whether it's equipment or personnel, I'm not sure, but it is something that's not going to happen at the drop of a hat. And this is a resolution, so we don't have a delay period like we do with an ordinance, which has, if you adopt it regularly, it has a 60-day adoption period after publishing. So this is something that becomes automatically applicable tomorrow morning. And I don't know that we're ready for that technologically at this point, and so if we give ourselves another month, I think it would allow the technical side of things to catch up with word. We might be as a council. So I would recommend that we approve the tabling for the next meeting.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
What?
I'll just keep the first one.
What, we have a motion?
Yeah, I have to see if I get a second here now. Okay, it does feel like a second, Anna, you can speak.
So, as I mean, in the municipality, I also spoke with, had some other conversations with a number of other cities, and so it was very similar to what you just said, Shay, about unlimited, you know, limiting it too much or making it too broad, so I think the reason, I guess I proposed four was that I thought that was a good happy medium. I would like to move forward with this, if we pushed off another 30 days, if the... If we push it off another 30 days, if we push off and do the technology forward, we do need to move with speed while we can. And I think that's important, that we are taking action when it's appropriate as a city council.
Motion to approve?
Well.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll have a little more discussion, I guess. Craig?
Well, Wendy is before me.
I do remember, I think John Lopel said on the virtual Zoom meeting that while the community might not like it, that we could do it, kind of put it up where we needed to, and make it work. And then later on, if we needed to do more advancements and talk about financials of like a data and software or technology, we could do that, that we could do it where it could be functional, like today, if we wanted to. But I hope it didn't speed come out.
Yeah, Sydney wanted to meet with me, and he actually sent me an email this morning that pretty much said that, or maybe it was early afternoon, pretty much said we could do it, it might not be fabulous, but, but we'll meet with it shortly and try and talk about it better, so. Travis?
Yeah, I feel like it's also important that we move the speed on this, just because the amount of times that we've been tied on bills already, having a quorum with an absent member seems like on some issues it might be difficult.
The only question, that's, thanks for reminding me, that's the only thing that I did omit. That's, the only other concern that I have is that we don't know cost. I mean, I'm sure it's not gonna cost tens of thousands of dollars, but you never know in this day and age of...
It's going to be impacted.
Yeah, and that's the only, that's the only other reservation I have about it, was I hate to put something in place before we have the infrastructure to support it. So, you know, without knowing a dollar sign, I don't think that's really a... I don't want to say that's not appropriate, but I think we have to look at the fiscal side of things before getting into this. I don't know what it costs.
I think, and I might be wrong on this today, Mr. Lopel also mentioned that if we did that kind of quick and dirty, put it on the screen, it would maybe be simple as one, having to have split screen with Zoom, and it'll be projected. And it might not cost anything, but that, he's already had the Zoom licensing. That could be correct information, but that's what I thought he had said during that meeting. For the, in the immediate, nicer word maybe could be a TV, have a patrol stay on. That would be, and I just think they weren't sure of yet, but for an immediate, that it shouldn't hopefully low cost nothing. I hope I should write.
Yeah, I don't know how comfortable I am with babies. And I'm not, and I'm not mocking. And I understand, you know, that we need to get things going. I have no problem with that. But I do kind of have a little bit of trepidation with, it might not cost anything, or it might cost whatever, you know, I just don't know.
Okay, Larry?
There's been discussion about having an unlimited number versus four. I had submitted an amendment for limiting it to, I'm withdrawing that from consideration anyway. But the reality is, is that if we vote on it tonight, we vote on four.
Correct.
With an unknown impact of cost to the city. If we delay the decision, and it isn't going to make any difference to any of us, if we're not here, we're not here for the next, for the next meeting. But the reality is that it allows us to readjust the the number of, the frequency or the number of times per calendar year to either go unlimited, leaving it up to each of us as a responsible counselor, or to set it at four. And so that's one reason for postponing. Another reason is the cost, and we need to find out if that, what it's going to require. Do we get a picture-in-picture, or do we get a whole screen that comes up with the individual when they speak? How is that going to be affected? So I think we need, we need some feedback from our technical staff, our IT staff, in terms of how the impact is going to be, and what the cost might be. So that's just my reason for table. And we can change the language if we want to, what comes around.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to pass it for four times a year. So we'll have a roll call vote on that, and see where we land.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
No.
Isbell?
Yes.
Hansel?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes four to two. Thank you for that discussion. Last one is P, resolution amending the rules of order and procedure in Bellevista City Council to create a consent agenda procedure for approval of certain meetings to promote efficiency in the conduct of meetings. This was Shay Newport's suggestion.
I think this is a great idea. There's a lot of things that are not contentious, that just are easy to say yes to. And so if it's for minor meetings, I love it, I think it's great.
I think it's going to be awesome. I mean, that's, and that's what I was getting at earlier, is that it's, it's a different atmosphere with people when you actually have people that are looking for ways to approve. And that's, I think that's great, so, good job.
Okay, Travis?
If, if one of the council members had an issue with an item that was under the consent package, it's as easy as we can just bring that up here, and it gets removed from that, doesn't need a vote to remove that.
Any one of you can do that, so you just, as we get to the consent agenda, you can say, "Mayor, I'd like to pull out three off, or I'd see you whatever, handle it independently," and it gets done. It doesn't require a vote, it's a one-person call to me, so that's it.
I like this idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good protection, because everybody might think, oh, this is just routine, and somebody says, "Hey, wait a minute, maybe it's not routine," and it's easier to get it off, so it doesn't seem like there's a downside. Larry?
One thought to me is that, I'm assuming priority-wise, the consent agenda becomes an initial item on our approving list, and then if an item is pulled by one or more council members, then that would be the next item of consideration in the sequence that goes on.
Right after the adoption. So if you look at the exhibit, which is the proposed rule, we're adding a subsection B2, and that just says, "Any item of business requiring a vote in the city council that is not in proposed ordinance, including but not limited to action on the minutes or a proposed resolution, may be placed on a consent agenda for approval. Consent agenda items shall be voted upon as a group without discussion by the city council. If a council member wishes to comment upon or discuss a consent agenda item, that item shall be removed and considered immediately after the consent agenda has been voted upon." So you would have consent agenda if it's... What if you want to pull one of those off, then you'll vote on what's left of the consent agenda, and immediately move into that item.
So for clarification, would resolutions be a candidate for that agenda, or no?
Yes, yes.
It would be.
Yes.
Ordinances would not?
Ordinances do not, because they have a free reading requirement. It requires suspension of rules, and we could not do those through consent agenda items. There are certain items that you do hear that may require a special public hearing when it comes to, say, a vacating right of way, or those very specialized things. That could not be in a consent agenda, because you've got to have a special public hearing for that. So that would be the example of an item that would not be eligible along with any proposed ordinance.
Motion to approve?
Second. That's Shay Newport and Travis Hart.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Followed, oop, I'm so sorry. Hansel?
Yes.
I won't do this again, I need to take. Hart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried six to zero. Next, items announcements. Next city council work session is Friday, 30 p.m. on Monday, March 17, at Bellevista Police Training Room. Next city council regular meeting, 6 p.m. Monday, March 24, at Bellevista District Court. Planning commission work session, 4:30 p.m. Thursday, February 27, at Bellevista District Court. Planning commission regular meeting, 4:30 p.m. or immediately following VCA, Monday, March 10, at Bellevista District Court. Board of Construction Appeals, 3 p.m. Tuesday, March 11, if necessary, at Fire Station Number Four, Conference Room 1639, Forest Hills Boulevard. Larry?
I have a procedural question. Did we appoint someone at the last meeting or at this meeting for the Board of Construction Appeals, am I way off base, or?
This is Jane Wayne.
Who's Jane Wayne?
Okay. I think that's everything then, Larry, you're in. Thank you very much.